Welcome to the City of City Council, November 14, 2016. Call to order, please.
Councilmember Keener.
Here.
Councilmember Nyheart.
Present. Sorry.
Councilmember Irvin.
Present.
Mayor Protem O'Neil.
Present.
Mayor DeGree.
Present. Okay. Thank you. Salute to the flag by me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Closed session report, please.
No reportable action.
Okay. Special presentations, I guess we have done this evening. Consent calendar, we have items one through 10. I believe we have a pull for number six and nine. Number six is, where is it? Adoption of resolutions authorizing the filing of an application for one Bay Area grant funding for the 2017-18 pavement rehabilitation project, Palmetto sidewalk and city curb ramps projection. And, okay, councilmember Keener, you wanted that for?
Yeah, so, the part that I had a question about was the Palmetto sidewalk. It is on the west side of Palmetto, from West Line down to the Dollar Radio.
We're going to discuss, do you want to pull it for discussion?
Let's try a question or two and see where we get to.
Okay, so let me stop for a minute and go to number nine, was that the other one?
Yeah.
Number nine was administrative policy regarding approval of over-hire positions. And I think for that you wanted a staff report?
Yes.
Okay, are we okay with that?
We're not really prepared for a full staff report, but the staff is ready to answer questions and go over and explain it if the council would like us to do that.
Okay, so I think for, remind me if I'm on the correct route here. If we vote for items one without those two, is that the way we should go?
That's typically what we've been doing.
Okay. So then I'll take a motion for the consent calendar except for item six and nine?
I actually put on my light, but I'll second it.
Eager Beaver here. Okay, call for a vote, please. And that passes five to zero, so we just approve the consent calendar except for item six and item nine. So shall we start with item six, please?
All right. All right, back to item six. And the question I have was about the sidewalk from West Line down to Dollar Radio and on the west side of Palmetto. And, correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't think there's any buildings there except Dollar Radio. Is that right?
Good evening, honorable mayor, members of the council. Vanoc Rambo, Director of Public Works, responding to the question of councilmember John Keener. Yes, that is correct, but what it does is that it provides connection to the homeowners for Fairmont West to be able to get to the shopping center at Manor Drive. And it will also bridge a gap in our coastal bike and ped, I mean, actually it's more like bike, I mean, ped network, I'm sorry.
Say that last phrase again.
It will also bridge the gap, the gap that we have with our coastal sidewalk network.
Uh huh.
Or pedestrian.
Or pedestrian, sidewalk, yeah.
So, why don't you put the sidewalk on the other side of the street?
There is an issue regarding a particular endangered species bush that's in front of 4,009 Palmetto, that's the reason why we moved it to the other side?
How much pedestrian traffic do you expect on this sidewalk? I mean...
There's a lot, primarily because it does not only serve our neighborhood in the Fairmont West area, but it also is an avenue for residents in Daly City, the Skyline Drive area, to get to our shopping center.
Yeah, okay. We can have a vote on this now if you want.
Shall we go on to number nine before we take another vote?
On number nine, I just would like the staff to, you know, read and perhaps discuss the need for these over-hire positions. And so, nothing spectacular, but just standard.
Happy to do that. And I think Assistant City Manager Lorenzo Hines will be walking through the report.
Okay, great. Mayor DeGree, Mayor Protem O'Neil, and honorable members of the Pacifica City Council, I'm here to present-
A little louder, please.
Really?
Because it's just me.
I don't hear that that often, that I need to be louder. So this is an administrative policy regarding the approval of over-hire positions. Because of our size, we are particularly subject to when folks leave because of retirement or termination or for some other reason. And so what this allows us to do is take sort of proactive measures where we know someone is about to retire or know that there's a possible termination for some other reason. And it allows us to actually put a person in place to essentially shadow the person that's leaving. And that way, that knowledge, that experience is absorbed by someone who's going to stay with us. And we're not in a situation where someone walks out the door with 20, 30 years of experience and we've got a bunch of newbies to replace them. So this allows us to take a more proactive step. Now, the caveat, or sort of the framework here, is that this over-hire policy, the actual over-hire itself must be within the department's current budget. In other words, the current authorized budget that you all approve. So that's got to be the first thing. And secondly, we do plan on reporting out to you all when this occurs. But in order for us to maintain the optimum flexibility, we're asking for the delegation of this authority to the city manager to allow us, again, the word is proactive, and we don't want to get caught behind the eight ball. Now, I've got Director Perez here from Parks, I've got Director Ocampo from Waste Water and Public Works. And these are two of the directors that are, for lack of a better word, vulnerable because of the size of their staff and the complexity of their programs. And these two gentlemen would actually be sort of the main beneficiaries of this particular policy. They can speak to their needs without getting into any specifics, but they're here to talk if you need that, okay?
Councilwoman Irvin, did you have a-
I just have a quick follow-up. So we're talking two or three months, six months, what time?
Typically, we want to, we'll shoot for two to three months. But again, it all depends on when we get wind that the person is leaving.
Right.
We've got a graying workforce, and that possibility is always looming.
Great, thank you. If I could follow up on that, the council knows that we are facing, speaking of the graying workforce, we are facing what's been coined the silver tsunami. Basically, people starting to retire in greater numbers in the public sector, probably the private sector as well. And as was mentioned by Assistant City Manager Hines, we don't want to lose that institutional knowledge and memory all of a sudden if we have other tools that are available to us to have some overlap between the employees. And we are seeing that occur in the two departments that were highlighted, but actually all of the departments are susceptible to this. And it won't, by the way, apply to every single position. There are some positions that we don't necessarily need this kind of overlap. And so we'll be judicious about how we apply it. And also the amount of time, some positions may take a month, some positions we might have as much as two or three months and perhaps even six months, but that would be most likely an extreme. And also, as the Assistant City Manager mentioned, we'll report back to the council annually on how we've used this, so you'll get to see how we're implementing it. And we're likely to bring other tools to you as we discover them to help us address the succession issue that we're facing.
Okay, is that good? Is it good?
Does Director Perez or Ocampo have any further comments?
Good evening, Mike Perez, Director of Parks, Beach and Recreation. Yeah, just specifically in my department, we've had, we're just about the end of an 18-month period where we have four retirements, all people who had either just shy of 30 years or more than 30 years of experience. So we have about 120 years, you know, walking out the door. And it's the ongoing trend of our long-term staff members that are leaving, taking all this experience with them and institutional knowledge. We would really like to take, you know, steps to pass this on and train the next generation of full-timers for the city. It gives us an opportunity to take advantage and, you know, learn from those folks that are on their way out and pass on that knowledge. And even more specifically for my department, as it relates to childcare, for instance, it's really hard to, typically, we would have no overlap at all. We'd have a gap of a month or two. And it's hard to staff centers when you don't have enough staff members there that have all the requirements. And, you know, it's nice to let family know, or the family members know, and licensing and all those things when you're making large changes in full-time staff members. So that's pretty much how it affects us.
Yeah, and the same with the Department of Public Works. We have individuals in key positions that are, you know, 30, 33 years of experience. We actually have like around six of them already. And these are folks that play a very important role, especially during emergency responses. So knowing your infrastructure well and how to go about responding to emergencies is very important to us in order for us to respond to whatever our climate or whatever, or weather would bring us.
Thank you. Mayor Protem O'Neil.
I was just going to kind of reiterate what Director Perez says, because I know that some of those people write the grants, and your department runs it, what, 96% funded by grants? And, you know, it's very little overhead to the city. But what's critical is if some of those grants aren't written, you will lose them, because only a municipality can get them. So it is critical to have the continuity in that department. I'm not minimizing, you know, Public Works, but I'm just more familiar with Park and Rec. So I think it is a good policy to start and move forward.
And one thing, too, it alerts us all to the need for city employees. So if you're a young person looking for a career or family members, encouraging, it is a very important, sorry, very important job to have a really strong staff, so. All right, I'll call for the vote on both of those?
One at a time, please.
One at a time? Sorry. Let's start with item six. I'll take a motion, please. Are you okay?
Yeah, no, I'm just on six. I had a couple more questions.
Okay, go right ahead.
Just in terms of the streets that are eligible in this town, because these streets have to be eligible for federal dollars, right?
That is correct. And that was mentioned in the staff report, that, you know, you have federally streets that are, you know, have to be federally streets in order to apply. The bike and ped, though, is a little bit different, though. The maintenance of the street is the one that you're pertaining to.
So the issue is really the bicycle piece of that?
It's the bicycle pedestrian component of it, yes. And if you would recall, that particular section of Palmetto Avenue is narrow. In fact, we've been receiving a lot of requests, particularly from people with disability, about not having a way to get to the shopping center that-
From the condos and-
Yeah, from the condos and from the neighborhood of West Fairmont. That's the reason why we're bringing this particular section into light.
And this money comes up how often?
I beg comes in, I believe, three-year, four-year cycle.
Thanks.
Thank you.
But the availability, sorry, but the availability is not the same as to the amount of money that you have. Just want to point that out. And also, including the competition.
Exactly.
Mayor Protem O'Neil.
I was just going to make a motion for, yeah, I move that we approve item number six on the consent calendar.
All right, call for the vote, please, on item six. And that'll be four to one. And moving on to item number nine. Mayor Protem O'Neil.
I move that we approve item number nine on the consent calendar.
Second. Thank you. Call for the vote on item nine, consent calendar. And that approves five to zero. Thank you. Moving on to oral communications.
Kill my light.
Killing the light. Thank you, staff. So for oral communications, remember, this is for items not on the agenda. So if you decide that you have something not on the agenda that you would like to speak about, so our first speaker is Anna Booth. Teresa Dyer.
First, I just want to thank everyone who voted to help us keep our libraries open. We appreciate it. But I really came to invite you all to the 20th Annual Pacifica Poetry and Music Festival. 20 years. I remember, I barely remember what it was like 20 years ago. And we've done this every year. It will be this coming Sunday, November 20, at 2:00, at the Pacifica Coastside Museum, aka the Little Brown Church on San Francisco Boulevard. Here's our flyer. Does it show? Okay, well, anyway, it has the Pacifica All-Stars. For the first time in 20 years, everyone who is on the show is from Pacifica. We used to feel like we had to import talent from Half Moon Bay or San Francisco. We've got plenty of talent this time. David Hersel, a wonderful poet, a great reader, has been with us since the beginning. Dorsette Hale, our poet laureate. Ian Butler, who has been with us since the beginning, and he is now playing the ukulele instead of the guitar. Kamencha, who's been with us since the beginning with her beautiful English and Spanish poetry. Jean Gibson, I just heard him for the first time. He sang at the Fillmore in the 60s. He has a wonderful voice, a great guitar, and he's going to sing for us. The coastside strummers, who've been playing around town, I sing with them, but they also play their ukuleles. And I'm also going to read some poems. So I sure hope you come, 2:00 Sunday at the Pacifica Coastside Museum. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your help making sure we always celebrate our birthday. Teresa Dyer. After Teresa, Lynn Adams, Joe Davis.
Good evening, Teresa Dyer. I want to thank all the residents for voting no on the library bond, and for Anna Booth for her attempt to stop it from getting on the ballot in the first place, as pro per. I'd like to add that our city attorney, who was involved, and she is an attorney, would have advised the city council that they needed four votes. This could have all been avoided. I would also like to mention that the day I wrote my last article against the library bond in the Pacifica Tribune, my car window was smashed at the tune of $325. And so if anybody knows who it was, I'm offering a reward. Also, Mike Mooney's car was scratched, and a statue of the firefighters that I gave, I presented to him, and he put down there so people could take pictures of his garden with the statue, was stolen. So Pacifica might mean peace, but we have a lot of hateful people living here that need to be reprimanded. And I'm not sure how you go about that, but one of your priorities is safety, and I'd like to see that more enforced, whether it's just $325 or $89 or what, you know? We need to be safe in this community. Thank you.
Thank you, sorry about that. Lynn Adams, and Joe Davis, and Jason Francisco.
My name is Lynn Adams, and I wanted to personally thank Mary Ann and Karen for your service. I appreciate all that you guys did, and I know how hard it is. Your job is not easy, and has not been easy. So thank you for your service. A year ago, we had to come in and talk about getting the $3,000 that the City of Pacifica has sponsored the Beach Coalition for Earth Day. And again, this year, we waited until we found out about AREF. And I wanted to let you know what that $3,000 has brought to you this year. I put together every year kind of a summary of our results, and they're really pretty remarkable. We'll try to get this up on our website so people can go refer to it. But so far, as of November 1st this year, we have one month to go. We've had 12,228 volunteers. We've removed about 7,000 pounds of trash. We've recycled about one and a half tons of recycles. We've removed 37,000 pounds of green waste in the form of weeds from Lindemar Beach and Rockaway, for the most part. We've removed 160,000 cigarette butts. 30,000 of them have been in the pots that we've installed throughout Pacifica, along the Beach Promenade, and a lot of, by a lot of the benches. I can tell you from experience that 160,000 would fill a culvert that's probably about this high, that's about this wide. So it's really disgusting and amazing, and I don't know any other community that is targeting it like we are. We responded to the Maxon container spill, still picking up container particles or pieces of container. We did school assemblies for 10 schools, even some outside of Pacifica. We brought 850 volunteers for give-back during our midweek work that do cleanups and restoration. We've been able to complete the weeding from Lindemar Beach all the way over to Rockaway. And now, for the second year, we've been able to target a really invasive species that's really hard to get out, Caltrans buckwheat. We brought Pacificans and our community together, and a lot of people from outside of our community, for a whale event that drew about 450 people. We drew another 175 people to learn about sharks. We've brought in so many people from outside of Pacifica, and we bring in people every week from outside of Pacifica. Almost two-thirds of our volunteers that we get at our Adopt a Beach are from outside of Pacifica. And almost 100% of our give-back program, 850 volunteers, are from outside of Pacifica. And they learn to love Pacifica and embrace the amount of community and the amount of giving that we do here.
Thank you, appreciate that. So I have two more, Joe Davis and Jason Francisco. If there's anybody else on something that's not on the agenda?
Hello, thank you, everybody. Thank you for your time. This is just a comment, seeing that the Fassler development is coming up regarding the condos. I don't know if tonight's the right time to just have a couple sentences and a comment.
Was that on the-
It's on the agenda.
Actually, it was on the consent calendar, so we've already passed on that. Sorry, it said orals, so that's how we missed it, that you were, yeah, so that we're out, we can't do it at this point, right? Is that right, Michelle?
Right.
Yeah, I'm sorry about that.
Okay, I'm behind then on that. I apologize. But I see that the environmental process review is on the agenda tonight.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I can't take it out of order. I'm sorry about that. So you can always bring it up in orals at a different time.
Okay, thank you.
He can talk about it now.
I asked Michelle, is this all-
He can bring up anything he wants in oral.
His card has, that isn't on the agenda, so.
Okay.
It is on the agenda.
Yeah.
Right, it is on the agenda, so, but, you know, it's up to the, it's up to the presiding officer if you'd like to make dispensation.
Okay, thank you, just a couple sentences. I'm a, thank you for your time, then. I'm a Pacifica resident, and, you know, seeing how the quarry has not passed a few times, I think the people are speaking in Pacifica regarding large development, anything to me that's over one or two homes. I just don't see how, you know, this could, this could pass, especially with the traffic in the morning. Anyone coming down Fassler in the morning, or of course, in the Lindemar area, this condo spot right below the existing condos is about where the traffic backs up to. So I don't know how 50 extra cars would expect to get out on Fassler in the morning and sit there for an extra 20 minutes, as a lot of us are trying to make a right-hand turn to get on Highway 1. To me, and to a lot of my friends and neighbors, even people who live further back in the valley are really frustrated. And I know there's many issues here. Some are people also passing through, of course, to Half Moon Bay, going to work to San Francisco, let's be honest. But to me, again, again, just how the people have spoken with the quarry and denied is, I think, just more of a showing that infrastructure would have to be improved before we have any large developments passing, just with the cars alone in the morning and coming home and on Saturdays. So it's not just the schools, it's not just the folks going to work every morning, but again, it's just the infrastructure until we figure something out, it just doesn't make sense. And everyone's just more frustrated and more issues. So thank you again, and thank you for your time.
Thank you for coming. Jason Francisco, and if there's anybody else with something not on the, oh, hi, Jason.
Hi there. Jase Francisco, Channel 26 Pacifica. I'd like to invite councilmembers to our annual auction. It's actually happening this weekend. We're looking for auctioneers. I'm looking at you, Michael. O'Neil. Karen, I know you've helped out, and actually, I think I've seen all of you there in the previous years, except for probably you, John Keener, so it'd be cool to maybe have you as either a phone bank operator or an auctioneer. But to the rest of you out there in TV land, this weekend, tune in, 5:00 Saturday, Sunday at 6:00 as well. We'll be having some great items. Marty's actually back at the station right now building this auction, and I got to take a look at it, and we got some really slick items. We got some Disneyland tickets. We got Sugar Bowl lift tickets. So if you guys are out there looking for some great holiday items, hey, if you've tuned into this telethon before, people steal those items. And, I mean, they go for cheap, and, you know, we got some good deals there. So again, not just, not just getting some good deals, but in turn, you guys are supporting PCT, you know, so we can, you know, continue serving this, this great community. So again, that's this weekend, the 19th and the 20th, in the evening, 5:00 on Saturday and 6:00 PM on Sunday. You can also watch us online at PacificCoast.TV. And not only support PCT, but local businesses, we also got some, you know, local restaurants, NYX. There's also some great ones down in Half Moon Bay that we got. And, yeah, so tune in and hope to see you guys there. If you guys haven't gotten a call from us yet, then we'll be trying to hit you guys up there, okay? Thank you.
Thank you, and the fact that we're even on the air is thanks to PCT, so. Thank you. All right. Thank you very much. And we'll close the orals and move on to council communications. Now, I'll put your lights on at the same time. Ny Heart.
I just want to do a few things here. I wanted to make sure that you all knew that Caltrans has added a little bit, Caltrains, I should say. I mean, unfortunately, we're pretty much at capacity during peak hours, but they have added a couple of cars and cars that are more efficient for bicycles. So, hopefully, there'll be some improvement, but until we electrify, it won't actually be totally improved. And then I wanted to let you know that CCG actually approved, that's the City and County Association of Governments, approved the water committee that I chaired the task force for. And so, we will be putting out a call after all the reorganizations. There will be five members appointed to that, one from the county and then each of the major areas, east, west, north, south, coastal being the west, obviously. So, there will be electives on that and that will serve to be a focus for coordinating grants and other things around sea level rise, around floods, around stormwater. So, I just wanted to let you all know that. I wasn't going to say this, but I just, I'm always impressed when I hear Lynn Adams talk about how much gets done in this city with volunteers. I'm just totally impressed. Which brings me to probably the biggest volunteers of all. I want to congratulate Sue Vaterlos and Deidra Martin. I am really, I really want to say that I want them to have a very, very successful time up here, getting their, the very best for our community that they can. And while it was an unfortunate situation that occurred and it really was unfortunate, that over the course of October, working with the Office of Special Counsel, I repeatedly was told we had not reached the threshold for a partisan election. But as things kept occurring and a complaint was filed from Pacifican, that kind of tilted that. And so, as late as it was, that's what happened. And I really want you to know that that was not ever an intention. The Hatch Act unfortunately has been mischaracterized by many in the community. And one of the things that it is not is a legal thing with me. I was not disqualified. I was not ineligible. I actually could have continued to run if I wanted to continue to fight. And that fight would have included a lot more investment in my potential, or should I say, risk for my potential retirement and employment. I have a really unblemished record, so getting into that whole disciplinary action, it's an administrative law. It's not anything that is related to something that's legal or illegal. So, that's a mischaracterization. Chances are fair, I would have won, but chances also were that it would cost me about $20,000 to do so. And no offense to anybody in Pacifica, at some point, you've just got to say no. However, I will tell you that I also in no way, shape, or form intended some of the things that have happened around that. And I'm pretty saddened by some of the behavior that I have seen, particularly things that people post online. And I in no way blame the Democrats, the county, they have a right to endorse whoever they wanted. They only had one person to endorse. That's who they endorsed. That fit their values. That's great. They have free speech. They have the ability to do that. And in 1990, as I said in the letter, that was passed, so that could happen. It would be really inappropriate to ask somebody that I don't even know to give up an endorsement. I mean, that's pretty much inappropriate. I had a little conversation, small one, but it really wasn't about that or Deidra Martin. What was really at issue had to do with all the things that got said online and posted online and posted online over and over and over again. People use an opportunity to sit in an anonymous environment and absolutely challenge in ways that are often anonymous, people who are in, trying to do the very best for the community. And that, you guys, it doesn't do anybody any good. I was flabbergasted when I came back to town and by the way, I did put up the, put out the press release and left town because I was afraid that I would do something that would be construed in any way, shape, or form as campaigning. And I told people that were related to my campaign to stop. I told other people to stop. I continue to try to tell people to stop and let it go. But unfortunately, people don't do that and they don't always hear what you have to say. I didn't ask for the real estate endorsement or the real estate ads either. I can tell you all of that just is unbelievably a wild election on so many levels. But I was appalled to return and see people with the things that they had posted online and said about Sue, about Deidra, about myself. I mean, folks just make up stuff. They take little pieces of information and make up the rest, innuendo and, you know, if you're going to have folks come from your community and step up to be responsible leaders, we're going to have to behave toward each other quite differently because you then run into those people when you go to the grocery store or you're going to sit in a committee with them or you're going to be engaged with them or you're going to maybe want to ask for their support on something you want. If we're going to be a real community and do well, we got to do it together. And so, we have to be honest with each other. We can't set each other up. We can't, we got to be straight up about our involvement in things and talk to each other. And if anything about this election, both locally and nationally could prove to us what we need, it's to have some compassion for each other. So, I hope it all stops and goes away and I really only haven't let go of a little bit about one individual, but I'm working on it. Because, you know, it's just, we got to move on. But it wasn't any of the candidates. They go after this stuff because they have a love for the community, an interest in the community, some ideas and passion. And when you set yourself up in public light, you've got to take it all today. So, I just want to ask the public to take a lesson from this and kind of stop all the rhetoric and start to move forward. Thank you.
All right. Yes, thank you very much. Good advice. Any other lights? Okay, my turn. Thank you to all those who run. It's always a blessing in a community when people do run because that opens up a dialogue within. And as mentioned, that's, a dialogue is very important and keeping the ability to express our ideas and stay at peace and move forward is very important. Thank you to those members of the community, those organizations who always step up to provide a panel. Those, that helps all of us to be better educated, to hear the different candidates at the same time. And that's another very, very valuable thing and it's, we always have it at every election. So, thank you to people for that. We just had Veterans Day, which was concerning to me that people had to work. That, I don't remember that being that way. I mean, you always have somebody that has to work, but it just seemed to be more commonplace that people had to work. And our county does have great veteran services, which I was able to attend, the one at the National Park and also Holy Cross. So, to all your veterans again, thank you all for serving. And for those of you who have family members that are no longer with us, you know, we thank you families too because as a family member, I know how involving that is. It's all-consuming and it continues. Our family lost a, one of my cousins during Vietnam and that stays with us at all times. So, I was with the beautification committee and I went to Marbella Court and with the Girl Scouts and they've done a wonderful job at that neighborhood park. It's a lovely place. It was a treat to see how beautiful it was and thanks to the young girls helping out. And there were families there and young children enjoying it while we were there ribbon cutting. So, that was quite another beauty of our community. The birthday of our city, I'm happy that we always have Anna Booth and others who remind us of our birthday. I think that's a very valuable thing. The history of Pacifica is fascinating. And happy birthday to all of you and to all of you who have made Pacifica what it is and will continue to. It's a very valuable thing. That's the 20th, by the way. And we are having an update on congestion regarding the lights. So, if staff could have an update maybe next meeting? More on the, with the conversations with the TA and Caltrans and the lights? Can we do that?
We will share whatever information we have available.
Okay. Thank you. Because that's at least something. People are very concerned about those lights. I have a little list here, sorry. And, ah, yes, the airport. Okay. So, we're moving forward, but it's still turmoil, shall we say? And for those of you who suffer from the San Francisco Airport aircraft noise, I'm still with you on deep concern about the negative impacts on your health. And with a couple of the members, we are going over the draft letter and asking that it be more pointed to our congresspersons to dedicate themselves to going after the FAA, to provide more timely responses and also an ongoing written in to an act to make sure that updates are more often and dedicated to being the science of the day. For example, the act we're under now is 1990, which doesn't fit. So, we're on the process of doing that and had a very fruitful meeting with our city attorney too, to go over what we've done so far. So, I really appreciate that, Michelle. And we, she and I and all, I think those of you who have been following this, thank our local residents who have been helping me to stay on top of everything. Your participation and input is invaluable and has helped us to get where we are. And we have, the fight is not over. We'll continue and hope to be able to give you even better news. But right now, there's no solution, I hate to say. I think that was it for me. Okay, so I have no lights. Okay. I don't know who was first. We'll go ladies first. Councilwoman Irvin?
I make mine very short. I'd just like to extend my heartfelt congratulations to the newly elected council members, Deidra Martin and Sue Vaterlos and I'm going to be very grateful for your service. And I am here always if there's ever a time that you would like to talk about how things are going or need any advice or anything like that. I'm just very grateful that you're serving our city. We need highly qualified people and you both represent that very well. And I'd also like to extend my heartfelt gratitude to council member Ny Heart who has served an incredibly respectable and immensely productive eight years. And she has done so much for the city and I'll obviously have more to say about that, but she will be missed and life, we go forward and I'm sure, like I am, she is always going to be available to see this city move forward and be a listening ear or offer advice whenever needed. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Keener?
Mine is a little more mundane. Last Saturday, I attended a retreat for Peninsula Clean Energy wherein we wrote a mission statement and adopted a bunch of goals. And I don't know if you can tell or not, but those things are not exactly my cup of tea. But we also had a couple of technical presentations that were more my cup of tea on how energy is priced and delivered and how PG&E charges us, us being the customers of Peninsula Clean Energy, an exit fee. And so, I think it all balanced out anyway. That's my report. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Seeing no more, we will close council communications and go to staff communications, please.
Thank you, Mayor DeGruy. My only announcement is just a reminder that city offices will be closed in observance of Thanksgiving next week on Thursday, the 24th and Friday, the 25th. Thank you very much.
Okay. Happy Thanksgiving to everybody. And we'll close staff communications and public hearings. We actually have no public hearing this evening, so we'll move on to the next two items which are under consideration. Item 11 is appointments to the Economic Development Committee and the Emergency Preparedness and Safety Commission. Proposed action, move to appoint two applicants to the Economic Development Committee and two applicants to the Emergency Preparedness and Safety Commission from the attached list of applicants.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and council members. Kathy O'Connell, City Clerk. Appointments to the Economic Development Committee and the Emergency Preparedness and Safety Commission. There are two vacant positions on each committee, one being Toni Boykin. Her term is expiring October of 2016 and also Peter Menard. His term also expires October of 2016. Emergency Preparedness and Safety Commission, Frank Erbacher and Deborah Johnson have expiring terms, October of 2016. So, this is the reason that we're filling the vacancies. And staff had advertised in the Pacifica Tribune, the city's website and social media outlets. Staff received eight applications for the EDC and five for the Emergency Preparedness and Safety Commission. Interviews were conducted by city council on November 9th. A list of the applicants for each is included as attachment one for the EDC and attachment two for the Emergency Preparedness and Safety Commission. The selection process this evening, staff recommends that council adopt two applicants for the expiring terms on the Economic Development Committee and two applicants for the expiring terms on the Emergency Preparedness and Safety Commission. Staff will circulate to all council members a list of all applicants for the two commissions' committees. I believe you have those up there. Staff will then ask each council member to place checkmarks next to the names they would nominate for appointment to each of the committee's commissions. And after collecting the list from the council members, staff will then tabulate the number of nominations for each applicant and report those applicants securing the highest number of nominations back to the council. Upon receiving the report from staff, council will then make a formal motion to appoint selected applicants to the Economic Development Committee and the Emergency Preparedness and Safety Commission.
We're going to start with economic development?
Yes.
Everybody have their ballot?
Do we, both or one at a time?
I suggest one at a time. We'll do the Economic Development Committee first.
Economic development?
Oh, okay.
Anybody wants to sing or dance? Any volunteers?
I would comment that we had amazing applicants and we'll only be able to pick I would comment that we had amazing applicants, and we'll only be able to pick two. And it'd be great to be able to pick multiple, but whoever ends up on, I encourage the others to join the committee, participate in subcommittees. I mean, you know, just great applicants this time. Every time, but a lot of them this time.
I think, yeah, I think what we're concerned is that they may not just go away, rather than participating in some manner.
Punk away.
Also, don't forget to check out the moon this evening. I think that special moon, we will have to be 400 years before we see it again, or some such thing.
I'll be here.
It'll be, well, Mike will be here, all right.
I won't be sitting here, but I'll be here.
Okay, so the two applicants receiving the highest number of nominations for the Economic Development Committee are Peter Menard and Samantha Hauser.
And that's...
So, we'll need a motion?
Okay.
I move that we appoint Peter Menard and Samantha Hauser to the Economic Development Committee.
Second, so call for the vote. And that passes five to zero. And I want to thank Toni Boykin for her, and hope she stays involved, and for all the others as well. So, the next one is Emergency Preparedness and Safety Commission?
Correct. Emergency Preparedness and Safety Commission are Frank Urbacher and Deborah Johnson.
All right. Take a motion. May a motion, Mayor Protem?
I move that we appoint Frank Urbacher and Deborah Johnson to the Emergency Preparedness and Safety Commission.
Second.
Second. All right, call for the vote, please. And that passes five to zero. And I think we are at the end of our meeting.
No, no, we have a communication plan.
Oh, so sorry. We had two votes. We were at the end of our two votes. My mistake. Okay. We are on consideration item 12, which is the Communications Plan Update 2016. Proposed action informational item only, no action required, but staff report, please.
Honorable Mayor, City Councilmembers, Kathy O'Connell, City Clerk. The City of Pacifica Communications Plan was approved by City Council on March 24th, 2014. Council directed staff to proceed with the implementation of the plan. This report provides an update of the progress made over the last year. The Communications Plan Implementation Committee has worked to meet the goals set forth in the plan for fiscal year 2015-16. Significant increases in interaction between the public and city staff have resulted in reaching a broader audience. Most recently, the Connect with Pacifica electronic newsletter went out on August 17th, 2016 via email, and continues to be sent out weekly with new content. On September 16th, 2016, we moved over to the Constant Contact Platform for delivery of the weekly newsletter via email to subscribers. When we began the Constant Contact, we initially sent out 3,096 emails. Since its inception, we have experienced an overall net growth of subscribers. We have received positive feedback from individuals that are enjoying the weekly newsletter. Tonight, we are presenting the third update to the Communications Implementation Plan. And with that, I will turn it over to Captain Joe Spanheimer for the PowerPoint presentation.
Thank you. Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Mayor Protem, councilmembers, city staff, and members of the public. Again, I'm Captain Joe Spanheimer with the Police Department, and also seated next to me is Ed Van Dehei with the City IT. And it's a pleasure to talk to you this evening. I've updated the cover, the front slide of our PowerPoint presentation, just some of the latest and greatest things we've done here in the city. And next, we have here is a snapshot of the several pages of PowerPoint spreadsheets that are attached to the staff report. The red checkmarks are things that we've just recently accomplished, and the gray checkmarks are things that have been accomplished, previously completed. And as always, we continue to work on those things. I would like to note that there are 68 of these individual goals and strategies documented. So, the next slide is something we started to do last year, and we're continuing now, is QR codes. And what QR means is Quick Response, or Easy Access. So, different flyers, handouts, brochures that we have at places like the Fog Fest or different fairs, we try to have the QR code on there so people can easily access it with smartphones, and get the data and bring it with them home. Whoops, sorry. All right. One of the biggest projects this last year, and we've actually been working on for quite some time, is updating the city's website. The old one was pretty nice, but it wasn't as user-friendly as it could have been. It didn't take up a whole computer screen. It was more of a portrait shape than a landscape shape, which is what our computer screens are nowadays. So, out with the old, in with the new. We have a new, updated webpage, much more user-friendly, easier to look at, more appealing, and easier to navigate your way around. One of the biggest things on here is, on the very front page of it, is "How Do I?" And you click on that when you want to learn something about the city, paying a bill, what do you need to start a business, et cetera? How do I? You click on that, and that is called a...
It's a mega-menu.
Mega-menu. So, that hopefully will take you directly to the page where you need to find the information. If not, it'll get you really close. So, that is, that is one of the nice features of this new website. There's a master calendar, shows council meetings, other city meetings, community events, all at one place. And it is really easy to read. The update of the website is all about making the site more usable, more user-friendly. With all the different outreach we have, we want to draw people back to our city website, make that the home base for everybody. I've done screenshots here of a budget report from this last year. While you can still find the spreadsheets with rows and rows of numbers, I think people prefer, you know, information at a glance. Charts, graphs, info, what's it called? Infographics. Yes, thank you. One other thing about the new website is you can access it on your smartphone, and it is much easier to use on your smartphone. And also, you can increase or decrease the size of the font that you're reading it with. So, it makes it more accessible to all users. We definitely want to get ourselves out there, get the people to know who works in the city. So, right here, we have City Manager's page, her picture, a bio, and most, if not all, of the other department directors have the same exact thing, a picture and their bio as well. It's not the only way that we want to reach out and get our citizens to know us here at the city. We had a City Hall selfie campaign a few months ago. So, we have City Manager Lori Tenfo, and then I believe we have the ambassadors of fun. They're taking a picture. So, get people to know, city workers have a little bit of fun doing so.
It's on Twitter.
It's on Twitter?
Yes, mention that.
This is on Twitter? There's a hashtag? My partner here knows a little bit more about this, so...
There was an organization called Engaging Local Government Leaders, and they came up with this hashtag campaign called #CityHallSelfie. And so, we were able to present to our citizens and other members of the Twitter atmosphere, the Twittersphere, and let them know how proud we are of our city. Actually, in addition to City Hall employees and other employees throughout the city, citizens got involved, too. And so, it was a nice way to kind of engage our citizens as well.
It is the single biggest smile I have ever seen, Mike Perez.
I like it, the Chesa Cat.
Yeah, really.
So, we are continuing to grow our social media presence. Nextdoor is super-popular. We're up to 7,295 members, up from 39,45, just roughly a year ago. This is only, it's a little over two years old now. 185 messages issued. Twitter, we launched that again, 2014. You can see how many messages the city, followers the city has, the PD has its own page, and then how many tweets we've issued. It's a great venue to get a message out and have it reach people right away with immediacy. So, it's one of the favorites. We have SMC Alert that's next, but we also use Twitter when we want to get a point across about roads closed, or something like that, when it's time-sensitive. And then there's SMC Alert. It's now managed by a company called Everbridge. And we are holding strong at about, you know, 4,000, a little over 4,000 subscribers, and we are one of the larger subscriber bases within the San Mateo County, so it's really good.
Can I ask a quick question? How did you get the subscribers to that? Did you reach out specifically for the, on the SMC Alert?
Yeah, I'm the administrator for the city for SMC Alert, for the Everbridge system, so I can log in and see how many subscribers there are. And that's something that we push. I push it at our CERT meetings, our CERT events, we push it at the Fog Fest, anywhere we can.
Excellent.
We push it at City Hall. We have flyers about it, and the PD.
Great, okay.
If I could ask a question while we're on that?
Yes.
I just noticed that Nextdoor is like 7,000.
Uh-huh.
Yeah, sorry. And SMC Alert is 4,000?
Correct.
It makes me worry a little bit. I want to make sure everybody's safe.
Yes, no, Nextdoor, it's very popular. It, and it spreads by word-of-mouth, it's...
I'm more interested in how do we get all those Nextdoor people to be SMC Alert people?
Oh, the same messages go out, right?
I would like to, you know, if there's a certain area of concern, I blast things out on Nextdoor, Twitter, and SMC Alert, to really make sure I reach all demographics, all geographic areas.
So, maybe you could take a minute, right, take a minute right now, just to explain what SMC Alert is?
Okay. SMC Alert is a messaging system, whereas I can send out text messages, I can send out messages to email subscribers, or both. Oftentimes, I will send out a very quick attention-getting message on a text and say, "See email for details," because we are limited on how many texts you'll get. And also, I can actually do like a reverse 911. I can bring up a map of the City of Pacifica, and I can draw a box around a certain area and send a message out to people in that geographic area.
Interesting.
It does work best with landline-based phones, so when people are using a cellphone-only, or it's a voice-over-internet protocol, for example Comcast is their phone provider, it's not as effective. But it's a very, very good system.
And so, your alerts are regarding traffic congestion, robberies?
Right.
Kidnappings?
Yes. Could be, hopefully it won't be a tsunami, mountain lion. I sent one out over the weekend. There was a mountain lion sighted in the Lenimar area. Road closures, you know, traffic hazards, any emergency conditions. Could be if there's an extreme storm coming, we'll send notifications out with SMC Alert.
And on that note, you send very similar notifications out on Nextdoor as well, so it's kind of a double whammy there. You're...
Yes. And I actually, I actually love Nextdoor because, not that they're endorsing me, or I'm endorsing them particularly, but I can send out a post on Nextdoor, and it'll ask me, post to Facebook, post to Twitter. So, it's real easy for me to do, or any other city department.
Excellent.
So, then actually 7,000 people are getting...
Yes, it is.
All right, thank you.
Oh, yes.
But I think what's important about what you said is that you have multiple forms of, and if it's really important. I hate the fact that we're losing ground. I don't know that people understand the use of cellphones and giving up landlines for that. But I can tell you that during the tsunami, all of my, all three phones were going. So, it did work for that.
Well, good. It's good to hear. Okay, so moving on, you know, we are definitely trying to keep at the forefront with technology, but we are keeping with our mainstays as well. You know, we try to partner with the Tribune whenever we can. And this is just an example of the recent paper. Chief Dan Stidl wrote an article on his first year, looking back, as you can see. And so, I put there the rough subscription of the Pacifica Tribune as well. Community involvement, we did the same slide last year, but this year, I added more bullet points. So, it's, our community involvement is increasing. So, we have things from the Sea Level Rise Forum, which we had in this building here a few weeks ago, the EcoFest, EcoFest, excuse me, Disaster Preparedness Fair, National Night Out. We have our city booths at the Fog Fest. A couple new things there is the COPS and KIDS. We did it for the first time this last summer at Seabowl, and it was a great success, and we intend to do it again next year. We've had the Palmetto Streetscape presentations we've done. Coffee with the Cop is a new program that we've instituted, and I think we've had about three or four, and we're going to continue to do that, so we have our community outreach. And then there's been a variety of community presentations done by every department here, whether it's on the budget, or disaster preparedness, safety presentations, or just topics of interest here in the City of Pacifica.
These are all new from, you've added these in the last four years.
We weren't doing these at all, right?
We used to do things like National Night Out, that's sort of a regular thing, but a lot of the things are brand-new. You know, we have an increased involvement in EcoFest, and the Sea Level Rise is obviously new. We definitely have an interest and concern there. But, yeah, there's several, several new things that we are doing.
Coffee with the Cop, and it sounds like you get a ton of positive feedback from...
Oh, it's been great. You know, it's a national, we used to do it infrequently and sort of informally, but we actually brought a group of officers from Southern California up here, and they gave us a class on how to do it the right way, I guess. And, you know, it was really good, and we hosted it, and we invited some neighboring agencies, and so, you know, we're all doing it. And so, yeah, we see the benefits of it.
Very nice.
And one of our other big projects, Kathy O'Connell was talking about it earlier, Connect with Pacifica. It's our weekly e-newsletter gets sent out with all the current events, tips, variety of things. And as you can see, we again want to direct people back to our homepage, our city website.
One more question. If people would like this and don't currently have it, how, what is the best way for them to get you their information?
They can send an email to connectwithpacifica, it's all one word, at ci.pacifica.ca.us, or they can call my office and talk to my assistant, Sarah. The phone number is 650-738-7409.
Thank you. Perfect.
Thank you. So, yes, Sarah Coffey's been huge in putting this together, and she provided this information. Just some quick stats, the last one we put out before this package was completed here. Again, I think Kathy alluded to this. We began it on August 17th this year, and over 3,000 emails were sent, and 899 opened, which is, you know, just under 30%, but that's actually really, really good as far as things go, sending out newsletters via the... things go, sending out newsletters via the internet. Also of note, of those that were opened, most of them were on a mobile device. So, you know, people on tablets or smartphones. And then, once the newsletter is opened, 127 unique clicks on content within our newsletter. So, that's also really good. Now, we did have three people unsubscribe, but we had a net gain, we had four new contacts subscribed. And hopefully, those people will talk to their friends or neighbors, and will have continued subscriptions.
And that's just a snapshot from that particular week.
Yes.
And there has been a trend of 30% opening the email over the course of the, over the life of the communications. So, that's what we're hitting consistently, and as Captain Spanheimer said, that's remarkable for an email newsletter like this, to have that kind of response. So, we're very happy.
And then, as I said, we still have our mainstays. We continue to use direct mail, when possible. So, these are just some examples. Last winter, you know, we sent out leaflets regarding winter storm preparedness, and, you know, hopefully, people, even though, you know, the storm's not supposed to be as good or as strong this year, hopefully, people will still, you know, pay attention and make preparations. We have an example here of the PBNR Play Activity Guide. And then, the last slide, Mission Almost Accomplished. I said at the beginning, we had 68 different goals and strategies listed on the various, on the spreadsheets. 59 of them have been completed and are continuing to be worked on. So, we have nine that we still need to work on. And so, that will be, that'll be what we'll continue to work on for the next year.
Next year.
But that's a lot of work that we've done over the last couple of years, I think.
Thank you very much. Any comments from city council members? Any questions?
So, I had a question, in terms of communication. First off, I'd like to thank you for the presentation, and also really commend staff for an incredible job, because they've gotten such a large amount of different projects completed over a very short period of time, and way ahead of schedule in terms of finishing or, you know, completing the communication plan. So, really, it's so much hard work on top of everything else that you're already doing. I had a question in regards to if somebody wants, so you provide Nextdoor and emails and things like that. Now, if somebody has a question about something you're posting, what's the best way for them to get their question answered? It's, I know, because I know it's so difficult when you have 3,000 people you're sending out, or 7,000 at Nextdoor, to open up the communication. And I know one of our primary concerns was to be able to have the bandwidth, to be able to respond to back-and-forth feedback. So, just wondering about that.
Each of the social media accounts are able to accept direct messaging.
Uh-huh.
So, we can get an email from there, and the email that gets sent to us gets carbon copied to a few people that manage the account. And so, we can answer it from there.
And that's been manageable so far?
Yes.
Okay, nice. And you're able to get back in touch within a couple of days, I imagine, or...
Yes, I can just comment on Connect with Pacifica. We do get responses almost every week, sometimes compliments, sometimes questions. We do our best to respond. I'm not sure I could say that it's consistently within a couple of days. I try to get back to them before the end of the week. And if I can, ask another staff member who can respond more quickly, we take advantage of that. So, we do our very best to have them hear back from us as quickly as we can.
It's really great, thank you.
Councilwoman Iher.
You know, it's interesting to me, I appreciate what you're doing so much, because it is interesting to me about getting facts out into the community. You know, you always have to realize that everybody's going to hear it through their own filter, but the more we can do that in consistent ways, the more the truth actually comes through, instead of, you know, the spin and the whatever. So, I appreciate the multi-pronged approach and the way we push that information out. This is exactly what we wanted when we talked about the communication plan, and I'm really very appreciative of it. Thank you to the staff, and it really has been a whole staff involvement, all of you. And I didn't actually know who the fund makers were.
Uh-oh.
But now I see.
Councilwoman Urban?
Just one more question. Is there anything that hasn't been done yet that was on this communication plan that has 68 different projects, I think you said?
Yeah. Yes, there are roughly nine items that we still have to look at.
Okay.
And it's a matter of time, some are a matter of money.
Yes, just as an example, so I believe one of them is to either have a geographic information system or enhance. I don't think we have one yet. And so, we'd love to be able to have that as a communication tool, but it's an issue of money, and the city currently does not have enough funding to be able to invest in that kind of a system. But it's on the list.
Great, well, you're ahead of schedule so far. And the other thing I just really wanted to respond, and it's the webpage is beautiful. I really appreciate the webpage. You've done a tremendous job on that, and it's, you know, very significant improvement in just coming up to date with current practices, webpage design and whatnot, and I've heard a lot of comments just to me individually, so I'd like to extend that to the staff as well.
Great to hear. And that's another case where there's a committee of staff who took on updating it with the leadership of Assistant City Manager Hines. And they maintain it and make sure that it has updated information, and they've done a great job.
Wonderful.
Any other questions? See, no questions at the moment before I make my comments. I just want to know if there's anybody in the audience that has any comments? Yeah, come on up and leave a yellow card afterwards. Come on up.
You can add it to a card.
Oh, do you have one?
Thank you again, thank you for all your work. And I just had a question on the one communication, and in fact, I want to make a comment first. I do receive the e-letter, and I was on the email as far as the weekly city e-blast, and that's how I was able to find out not only about tonight, but I was one that clicked on the agenda, so I really appreciate it. And the question I had is for the other communication, it was the, I believe it was called the SMC. Now, that's different than the phone call that we would have received when there was a tsunami or the fire in Rockaway. That's correct, right? That's a different county organization that receives maybe a disaster phone call?
That is actually, should be the same system.
Same, okay. And so, people had to sign up, because I know some of us did get a phone call, for example, when there was the fire almost two years ago.
Oh, oh.
The way we're alerted in the morning.
Right.
So, I guess as well, they could not only give you their email, but the phone number as well, somewhere.
Yeah, people can register smclert.info, and they can check on what city they would like information for, they can check if they are CERT-trained, and so get special notifications.
Correct, correct. Thank you again.
All right, thank you very much. So, any other public comment? No? We'll close the public comment thing, so I'd just like to make a comment or so, and really appreciate all the hard work that's being done. And I just want to say to the public, because you have as much to-do power in this, is that we are fortunate to have a public television, and we are fortunate to have a newspaper in town. But I think to help them to be effective, you, the public, need to contact the Tribune to make sure that things are covered to your satisfaction. And then, for a public television, those of you who don't have Comcast, Comcast is the only one that has to do your elected council informations, and so, that's very important to us as a community. So, those who have Dish and AT&amp;T and those sort of things, you may want to start lobbying to get those organizations, whatever that takes, I'm not quite sure. But still, I think for the public voice, we are blessed to have both a TV and a Tribune. And to make them even better, that's going to take public voice, I would say. I'm happy to see more public forums. I guess I'm a regular stickler for public forums. I think the multimodal things that we're doing are very, very valuable and should be done, but I'm always concerned that we have public forums so that human beings can sit down and see each other and talk to each other and learn from one another, so I'm kind of a constant nag about that. So, thank you, thank you all very much, appreciate it. Councilwoman Urban?
I just want to say one more thing I really wanted to thank. This communication plan came out where we had two previous council members, Ginny Jaikwith and Councilmember Len Stone, that worked very diligently and hard and brought this forward and made this come to be. So, I'd really, and in addition, all the other council members that were part of council at the time, and the community members, really took a big part in formulating the communication plan. And then, we just were lucky enough that we had an amazing city manager that took it and ran, and we had an amazing staff that really gave it 110%. So, again, I really want to thank you all for all the hard, hard work that you did on this. I think it's been a major effort over the past couple of years, and it really shows, so thank you.
Councilwoman Iher.
Actually, I'm just, you made me think. To add to that, this effort at outreach, and I'm looking at our city manager, was actually one of the reasons that we chose you, because, as you know, we were so engaged with how you laid out and described things in your previous city work, and your presentation at the League of Cities, and all the things that you've done about communication, we felt very much like we wanted to take advantage of it. So, this has been a very excellent outcome to that. So, and the engagement of the staff has just been, you guys have rocked, absolutely rocked it. Thank you.
And don't rest on your laurels.
Oh, that's the schoolteacher coming out. Boy, doggy downer.
Exactly. So, anyway, enjoy the moon, it's supposed to be doing its thing tonight, it's a big special moon for this evening, and I think maybe a few more days, so thank you all for it. We will, oh, I wanted to adjourn, if you don't mind. If you watch PBR, PBR, not PBR, sorry, Public Radio, PBS, yeah. Gwen Eiffel, who's an extraordinary journalist, passed away today at age 61 from breast cancer. It's a bit of a shock, so if we could find a way to reach her family, because I know when we adjourn in honor of somebody, the city sends a notation to them. I know, it was quite a shock, so. All right, and for everybody, stay healthy, be careful, and enjoy the rest. Happy Thanksgiving. Do we have another one? Oh, we have one more before Thanksgiving, don't we?
No.
Oh, we don't? Well, happy, have a great Thanksgiving.
No, it'll be Thursday.
All right, thank you so much, bye.
Thanks.